Mendoza, here.
Hilpern.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Chow.
Here.
Cartha.
Here.
Joey, can you get the...
I move that the Board of Education approve tonight's meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
Cohen.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Hilpern.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Chow.
Yes.
Cartha.
Yes.
All right, shall we do the high five?
I would love to. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Spring is almost sprung, we think. But it's always sprung here when we get to recognizing outstanding service in the school district, and it is my pleasure to announce our April recipients for our High Five: Celebrating Excellence in District 65 Staff Recognition Program. Are we good? Sorry for the feedback. I'm still getting feedback. Maybe if I'm silent, if I don't say anything. I'm actually, maybe put it up. Just hold on a second, yeah, would you? Okay, we're gonna try again, and hopefully this will work, and I hope I don't bother your eardrums. So tonight I have the pleasure of announcing our April recipients of our High Five: Celebrating Excellence in District 65 Staff Recognition Program, which honors the tremendous work of our licensed staff members and educational support staff members. Special thanks always goes to First Bank and Trust for their generous sponsorship of the High Five program. Through this sponsorship, we're able to provide our staff with a $75 Visa gift card, a framed recognition certificate, and an invite to next month's celebratory luncheon for all of our, of this year's recipients. I'd like to now invite our April recipients to come to the podium. Mr. Arturo Fuarte, music teacher at Willard Elementary School, and Ms. Mari Cruz, registration specialist and a member of our research accountability and data team. Both are fairly new members of the District 65 team, yet have made an incredible impact on our students and families in the short couple of years that they have been here. Following both of our recognitions, I would like to invite our president, Suni Cartha, up for a photo with our recipients. So thank you very much for coming up. First, we'd like to recognize Ms. Mari Cruz, who takes the lead in registering new and returning students to District 65. She was nominated by District 65 family member Jennifer Robinson, who is unable to join us tonight. She shared with us the following remarks, and this is Mrs. Robinson, who's a parent in the community. Quote, "I recently moved back to Evanston with my six-year-old and needed to register her for kindergarten. I called and spoke with Ms. Cruz, who initially told me the documents that would be required. I had to move quickly from another state to housing issues and had no documentation with me. Ms. Cruz called me back the next day and in a way, with a way to get my daughter registered, and also directed me to Ms. Judith Treadway, apparently as on, to discuss available resources." And by the way, Ms. Treadway has, has been phenomenal as well. "At a time when it was looking like I had hit a brick wall, Ms. Cruz called with hope, information, and compassion. She constantly assured me that we'd get everything taken care of. When we arrived at District 65, she made herself available if I had any questions about the process, and I must have had, given her about 50 questions. She always responded with a smile and patience, and I am internally grateful. My daughter is in school, riding the bus, and we're getting settled in, thanks to your wonderful staff. I believe in giving honor where it is due and recognizing people like Ms. Cruz who go above and beyond. I personally work with Mari here at JAH and have witnessed similar experiences and her patience and compassion working with all of our families. I'm extremely grateful to have her as part of our team." I now, I now like to, well, let's give a round of applause for that. I'd now like to ask Jerry Michael, principal of Willard, to come to the podium to help us recognize Mr. Fuarte, who received over 30 heartfelt nominations for this award from colleagues and Willard family members. We're appreciative of all those who submitted nominations on his behalf and those who have joined us tonight. To be respectful of everyone's time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Michael, Willard principal, to share some remarks. I also mentioned that he too submitted a nomination.
And I have just a very simple thing to say for Mr. Fuarte. For those about to rock, we salute you. For those of you who don't know, Mr. Fuarte's brought Little Kids Rock, which is a music program to, to Willard and District 65. And we saw the culmination of a couple of years of great work building this program up this past, just about...
Two or three weeks ago?
At the Hoop Nanny, where we had 11 bands perform. But we were also treated last summer when some of the bands that he led appeared in different festivals around Chicagoland and Evanston area. But the, the best part is, this year, I would have to say, were the third grade girls that came up to me every day before we were starting a band. Can you tell Mr. Fuarte, we're starting a band? And that's the kind of energy that he brings to this program. One of the best things about all the, we had 11 bands this year? 11 bands? One of the best things about the experience and the, and the parents coming to see them play was how it represented the, all aspects of our community. It was, it was truly reflective of our entire student body, which is in no small amount due to your energy. And amazing. All right. Thanks.
So, don't leave. Thank you, Jerry. On behalf of the school board and the administration, I'd like to thank both Ms. Cruz and Mr. Fuarte for everything you do. We're so proud of the work that you do, and you epitomize the great work that goes on day in and day out in District 65. So, Suni, if we can go and give these wonderful colleagues their awards, and maybe somebody could snap a picture for us, that would be great.
I got it.
Oh, there we go. Yep. So let me just do a couple of quick remarks and then some commentary on our equity agenda as well. As we head towards springtime, there's a wide range of activities across our schools: talent shows, plays, musicals. I got an opportunity to pop over at Shoot a couple of weeks ago, saw a fabulous student presentation. And again, the creativity of our children. Like I, like I say all the time, one doesn't need to go buy a ticket to Hamilton, you can just go to any of our elementary or middle schools and see wonderful presentations on, on stage. I do want to recognize, and we may have done this in the past, but we can keep recognizing her, Kristy Mitchell, fabulous kindergarten teacher at King Arts, who actually won the Golden Apple Award. And several of us are gonna, Suni and I are gonna join for the grand celebration, which will be televised on WTTW honoring Kristy and her outstanding service to students over time. It turns out, the day that she got the award, it was a total surprise. It was also pajama day. And so there were three network television stations, the press, and Ms. Mitchell and her students, all in pajamas. It couldn't have happened on a better, better day. Couple really fun things happening this week. At King Arts is its annual invention convention, which is really exciting. And on Saturday, the STEM Fest, which is sponsored by EvanSTEM, will be occurring, I think, this year at Shoot Middle School on Saturday. I wanted to pivot into some of my comments also on equity work and recognize the champions of equity around the district. I want to give a, a great round of thanks and applause to the numerous community members who have written letters of support and have put a stake in the ground to talk about how important our equity work is. It's a, it's something that we as a community are celebrating across all of the institutions in Evanston, and we couldn't be more appreciative of the, of the equity work going on, as well as the equity champions who exist inside the district: board members, senior staff, principals, teachers, support staff. I want to make sure that I explicitly express my strong support for their work and their ongoing efforts to address race and bias in our schools. I want to specifically salute the leadership of Mr. Adrian Harries, who's the principal at Nichols Middle School, as well as his fellow principals and educators across the district who are making up our district equity leadership team. The, the leadership that Adrian, Mr. Harries is making, and the other principals, and the other administrators, and many of our teachers, most of our teachers in this area is really quite important. And finally, I want to read a statement that I issued last week. We sent it out to many of the family, we sent it out to all the families in District 65, and it was picked up by some of the local press, but I want to make sure that, as a matter of record, that I express this tonight. "So in District 65, our mission is to prepare each student to achieve academically, grow personally, and contribute positively to a global society. Yet for decades, we have fallen short of achieving our goals for every child, even with the implementation of curricular best practices and focused interventions. Despite our best efforts, academic outcomes of our students of color remain several grade levels below their white peers. For longtime Evanstonians, District 65 educators, and especially for members of our Black and Latinx communities, this is a familiar story. Nearly three years ago, we renewed our focus on racial and educational equity with a strong, unwavering commitment from our school board and administration. I believe this work is critical for the well-being and academic success of our Black and Latinx students and to prepare our white students for success in a multicultural world that is far from race neutral. In an effort to close the racial opportunity gap, our approach is multifaceted and goes beyond classroom. We have taken an equity lens to our strategic priority areas to make systemic change across all levels of our organization, ranging from our curricular practices to employee hiring to examining school climate, acknowledging that programmatic fixes and one-off solutions have not and will not make a sustained difference. Changing the practices and policies of a system takes time, yet must be faced with urgency. Shifting attitudes and beliefs is not easy. We must equip our staff with the knowledge and skills to talk about race in productive and meaningful ways. We do this by offering a range of professional learning opportunities, mostly in whole group settings, and occasionally through self-identified affinity groups. This technique has been used for staff and family groups in District 65 for several years, and is commonly used throughout the Evanston community, across public education, in nonprofit organizations, and in the corporate world. We recognize that the idea of separating by racial identity feels uncomfortable for some. Staff can opt out of the school-based affinity groups, and the district groups are voluntary. Our aim is to create as many opportunities for reflection and conversation as possible so that adults are equipped to support students of all racial identities and meet each and every one of them where they are. As a white superintendent, I strongly support our equity champions, who are living and breathing this work day in and day out. I support the efforts being undertaken by our staff members, who hold multiple social identities, to address race, racism, and bias in an open and honest manner. While we are not the first to do this work, we are excited to be at the forefront of these efforts and see other districts embark on this work as part of the State of Illinois Required Training on Implicit Bias in Schools. Our agenda will continue to promote racial and educational equity in our schools, and we will not shy away from difficult conversations. Only by naming and learning about race can we create a socially just and welcoming environment where children of color and white children have opportunities to fulfill their true potential." That is my, are my comments.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments and updates. First, more than a month ago, the district became aware of violations of board policy in connection with prohibited political activity, specifically inappropriate campaign emails by a board member and district employees in violation of board policy and state ethics laws. Per the advice of the board's legal counsel and in the spirit of transparency and ethical accountability, the board authorized an investigation into the matter. It was our hope to have the investigation conducted thoroughly but quickly and have the report summarizing the attorney's findings available to the board and public for review at this meeting. However, challenges in scheduling the necessary interviews have delayed this. I have advised the board's attorneys to conclude the investigation as soon as possible and provide us with a written report including their findings and advice on any next steps no later than May 7th. As permitted by law and advised by our attorneys, we will share the results of our attorney's written report on this matter at that time. And then I also, also wanted to make a statement about the recent attacks on the District 65, and more specifically, on the leadership at Nichols Middle School and our racial equity work. The most recent of these attacks relies heavily on a letter that Mr. Harries, the principal at Nichols, received from Peter Cursonow, one of eight commissioners of the United States Commission on Civil Rights. There are a couple of things that it is important to make clear about Mr. Cursonow's letter. First, Mr. Cursonow reaches a conclusion in his letter that is not based on communication with Mr. Harries or anyone from central administration, but rather on an article in the National Review, written by two people who, like Mr. Cursonow, reached a conclusion without ever communicating with Mr. Harries or anyone from central administration. Second, Mr. Harries subsequently received a letter from the chair of the United States Commission on Civil Rights clarifying that Mr. Cursonow's letter does not represent the views of the commission, and that Mr. Cursonow's use of official government letterhead to communicate his personal opinion was a violation of a direction from the United States Senate Committee on Appropriations, quote, "to use letterhead only for items that reflect the views of the commission," end quote. These attacks are being made by people who deliberately mischaracterize and lack an authentic curiosity or concern about the work being done in our district. These attacks are being made by people who express inaccurate and frankly offensive assumptions about parents of color and single mothers. These attacks are being made by people who deliberately ignore the data that has been presented numerous times to this board and community, including by Stanford researcher Sean Riordan, regarding the racial gaps and opportunity to achieve in our schools, gaps that exist even when we control for socioeconomic status. These attacks are being made by people who have devoted significant time and resources to their agenda, which is to silence thoughtful and necessary discussions of race, privilege, and equity. This board's commitment to equity has not and will not be swayed by these recent attacks. To be clear, the board fully supports Mr. Harries and appreciates his leadership and action towards making his school and our district more equitable learning institutions. The board is privileged to stand with community partners like ETHS and Evanston Cradle to Career in our unwavering commitment to making our institutions more equitable spaces, particularly for those in our community who have suffered the most harm from systemic racism. We are moved by statements from the YWCA and Opal, as well as emails and petitions from a variety of community members, from parents of Nichols students, parents of students at other schools in the district, and community members without children in the district, all in strong support of Mr. Harries and the district's equity agenda. Systemic change does not come quickly or easily or without opposition, and I do not expect that these recent attacks will be the last attempt to intimidate the district, to abandon or dilute our commitment to racial equity. However, we continue to stand with and for our students and our families to confront and disrupt systemic racism. So for all of those who have written letters of support, we thank you so much for it, and we will continue to need it. With that, I want to open it up to any other board comments.
Sure. I wanted to build on some of the equity work that we do in, in the district. What is wrong with wanting to feel like you belong? Wanting to feel heard? Not feeling isolated or alone? What is wrong with wanting to be appreciated? Wanting to learn about others and seeing oneself reflected in the spaces one inhabits? What is wrong with being and feeling valued after not being and feeling valued for such a very, very long time? These are the very basic questions that are at the groundbreaking and necessary racial, at the core of the groundbreaking and necessary racial equity work that is occurring, not only at Nichols School with Principal Harries, but at all Evanston School District 65 schools, as well as throughout our partner institutions in the city of Evanston. There are those outside of Evanston, and sadly within Evanston, who are willing to mischaracterize and derail our community's journey in answering these very important questions, and who continue to blame the victims of systems and institutions that have historically marginalized people of color through policies and practices that were decided upon without their input or consent. As a parent, educator, and Evanston Skokie District 65 school board member who worked alongside community groups like Opal and AAACP and Latino Resources to push our school district towards this work, I believe this journey towards racial equity is a long overdue approach towards ensuring we move beyond the tired conversation of the so-called achievement gap to help us address the longstanding opportunity and access gap that marginalized Black and Brown communities have suffered for so long, not only in our community, but across the American educational system. Our marginalized communities want opportunity and access to culturally and linguistically responsive academic supports, such as literacy and math specialists for our students; opportunity and access to a broader culturally responsive curriculum that moves beyond just reading and math, and leverages the inherent richness of our culturally, racially, and linguistically diverse students and families; opportunity and access to school staff and leadership that understands how implicit bias impacts their interactions with their diverse community and student outcomes; opportunity and access to the proper curricular staffing resources and training necessary for our specialized programs and service ESL and African-American students to deliver high-quality instruction and programs with fidelity; opportunity and access to after-school and summer enrichment activities that are available to privileged families who can navigate our systems and institutions for those families who have not been able to do so. Our racial equity work is not at all about divisiveness. It is about Evanston, Evanston-Skokie School District 65 and our partner institutions working together intentionally and deliberately, and no longer in isolated silos, to ensure all Evanstonians have an opportunity to access all the best our community has to offer and is shrinking our community for generations to come.
Thank you.
Yes, I would just like to thank the community for all the work that the community and the parents are doing as part of this work. I, I was at the thinking that when you're being attacked, it's probably because you're disturbing the status quo. And I'm, I can tell you, as an, as a product of the District 65 school system, as a proud single parent of an honor roll student, and as, as a board member of this incredibly diverse board, I'm very proud of the work that we're doing, and I think that we couldn't do it without our community. So I want to thank the community members that wrote to the school board, but I also wanted to thank the community and the parents that are doing the heavy lifting at every single school, whether it's through the Black History and Culture Club that was just formed at King Lab, the teachers that participate in the Delt group, as well as our PTAs, who are right now immersed in these very difficult conversations about the diversity at our PTAs and how we engage our family members. Two, the very many members across the, the city of Evanston who are participating in SEED. As a member of SEED, as a participant of SEED, I can tell you that it has been extremely challenging, difficult, and for me, a dismantling and a relearning of how we can do things better. So I just, I really wanted to thank all the parents and all the community members who are helping us with this, this heavy lifting that we're doing. Additionally, I wanted to take the time to thank the District 65 Green Team and congratulate them on their very, on their inaugural film series that they had, and I want to also thank them for the conversation that they're having with us here at the administration building and through the district. I think that living next to, and being blessed to live next to one of the largest bodies of fresh water, I think that, to me, it's a direct connection to the equity work that we're doing, because we cannot, we cannot forget about our environment and how our marginalized communities are often most afflicted through malpractices of environment and sustainability. So I wanted to thank all of, all of those groups, and I'm sure that I'm, there's a lot that I'm not aware of, but it's only because of the work that our community is doing that we're able to stand here and stand proud behind the work that we're doing and that we're gonna continue doing, so just a thank you.
I just want to echo the, the comments of my board colleagues and Dr. Goran, that the, the equity work is, it is a purposeful investment that we've decided to make in where we want this district to go and how we want it to operate for all the students and staff. And just want to say that it's, it's important, and I support you, Dr. Goran, and your entire team, as you face the resistance that comes towards you, and let that just be a reminder of where other organizations are and where we could be, and be motivation to keep going forward.
Okay, and then the only other comment. I want to remind everybody that there will be another Board Community Cafe this Wednesday, April 25th, 6:00 PM, at the Levy Center, hosted by board members Lindsay Cohen and Candace Chow. So hopefully, we will be able to, some of you will be able to join us at that. These are unstructured meetings where community members are invited to come and ask questions of our board members. And with that, we will move on to public comments. Members of the public are welcome and invited to address the board during open public meetings. The Board of Education will not permit the voicing of personal attacks against any district employee or board member. Please remember to state your name and that you have three minutes to address the board. Our first speaker will be Oliver Ruff.
Thank you. My name is Oliver Ruff, a member of Opal. Good evening, Dr. Goran, Superintendent Goran, Board of Education members, staff, and audience. I stand here with recognition of efforts and progress being forged, but with much need for improvement in the sight of our students, who happen to be identified in categories that are of major concern. As we recently were informed of the debacle in Philadelphia at Starbucks, I find my mind seeping into a vision of identification with negative isolation and potential elimination from the mainstream of success. I say this because, as we reviewed the suspension statistics, it appears to me that the rate of removal from the schools is much greater for blacks than for whites. The increase was highly noticeable within the last year's report. If we are, if we are being arrested for no apparent reasons in many cases, how are we to be assured that the suspensions are being fairly parceled by persons, persons who are issuing them? The question is, that is a question, not an indictment. Only you can answer that with some pertinent and prominent measures to rectify the disparity. Students are not above corrective and redirective measures. However, when they are not in school and they miss much of the school time than their counterparts, you have to, you have to answer the question or wonder what is being done to remedy the situation, along with academic progress in both math and reading. Being Black has enough societal drawbacks. I just want the, the students in District 65 to have a better learning and playing field as they prepare for their educational futures. This does not- This does not refer to athletics. Some might say to slow down because things are beginning to change or are changing as well, but Dr. Martin Luther King once said, "We don't want to get into a deep freeze." It's harder for those of us who are not being affected by these situations to feel or not appreciate, to feel or not appreciate the urgency and need for equity in those areas where there is much disparity. Thank you for your time and ongoing efforts that you're making as a board and the improvement of the students in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Alice Berry.
I'm Alice Berry. I'm on the Board of OPALE. As in our recent published statement, OPALE is proud to support Nichols Middle School Principal Adrian Harry's in response to ignorant and biased attacks in the conservative press on his racial equity work, including his use of racial affinity groups. I've experienced the value of racial affinity groups myself, most recently at the White Privilege Conference in Grand Rapids, Michigan. This is my third year at that conference, which has been life-changing for me, and I want to encourage every white person hearing my voice to attend next year's conference in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. Each White Privilege Conference encourages attenders to join a caucus, which I think I can accurately describe as a meeting of a racial affinity group. Here's some of what the conference program says about caucus work. Caucusing is integral to the work of anti-racism. It provides safe environments for people who share similar racial experiences to explore the dynamics of race. Without fear of offending or alienating others, caucus participants can investigate feelings and attitudes that are part of their shared racial experiences. Racial privilege for white people and racial oppression for people of color and indigenous people shape racial identity and cross-race interactions in significant ways. Because of this, it is important to spend time in same-race groups to explore issues of privilege, oppression, and identity. Caucusing does not replace the need for mixed-race settings where we need to work together to eliminate racism and other forms of oppression. Rather, caucuses help us better work together in cross-race settings. The program goes on to say that in affinity groups, "we support one another in an environment where well-meaning, imperfect people are struggling, some for the first time, to understand difficult issues regarding race." Other affinity groups than race also meet at the conference as well, as I understand it. I attended a caucus at each conference I attended, and it was enormously helpful. It gave me a safe environment in which I could securely explore what I was feeling, share it with others, give support, and receive it. A lot gets stirred up, a lot gets processed, and a lot gets healed. An affinity group is similar to what in my profession of personal growth is called a safe container. To anyone who has never experienced a safe container like an affinity group, my hope is that you get to experience it sometime, so you can better understand its life-changing benefits. Thank you.
Roger Williams?
Just want to say that this is really, really is a critique of the District 65 Early Childhood Task Force Report. Many people here don't know what I'm talking about, but some of you do. It really is a report I was asked to participate in a task force group to look at the JEH, the preschool, early childhood program, and try to come along with some other people, come with some ideas to improve it. So it was involving three, three meetings. And what I wanted to do, let me give you a little bit of background, why that, we even got to that particular task force. Back in August of 2017, OPALE really made a strong push to, I shouldn't say a strong push, but we were really trying to deal with the issue, issue about the Black Student Achievement, starting in preschool, all the way, you know, early childhood, all the way up through, of course, through eighth grade. And what we did, we wrote a letter to, to Dr. Goran, and it stated, one of the things that we stated in the, in the letter was one of our requests regarding JEH Early Childhood Center. And one of the things, for example, it says, "Make available to the public and implement a plan that will improve the ISO test scores of Black and Latinx children enrolled in JEH Early Childhood Center by 50%." Okay? We, we had that goal, and this, this letter came out in, looks like in about, that was, that was in August. The following month, you responded, and you said that in answer to that particular question, okay, what we said, you said, "We wish to address the spirit of this request with a more comprehensive approach," which was the development of the task force. "We will convene a task force to review the community needs, assessments, and other relevant information." So that was, that was the purpose of the, of the task force. Now, I, we had our final task force meeting, and quite frankly, I have to say, I was, I was disappointed because basically we didn't do, it didn't address the issue that what we, what we went in for. Basically, let me just give you a quick summary of some of the critique. The report does not address Black student achievement at all. It addresses overall achievement. Of course, some people feel that just like all lives matter, if you take care of all, I say all lives matter, well, Black lives will be taken care of. Well, it's been proven that that doesn't work. Okay, the report does not address Black student achievement at all. Obvious attempt to, there's obvious attempt to remove race from the discussion. And here's something, despite the fact that the white kids who scored well on the ISO test given in kindergarten came from preschools other than JEH, no short-term or long-term recommendation addressed the obvious need to analyze the programs and practices of these other schools to learn how JEH might improve the academic outcomes of Black students on the ISO test. So, so, I'll nail it, just a couple of minutes. What you have is a colorblind analysis and presentation of data that goes out of the way, out of its way not to see the effects of systemic racism in the outcomes of Black children at JEH. So the, what, the main thing that we pushed for at the beginning was to develop, make available to the public, and implement a plan that will improve ISO scores of Black and Latinx children enrolled in the JEH Early Childhood Center by 50%. We did not accomplish that. And the next step is for us to come up with plans to actually address that, but I'm not encouraged because when, if, if the study that we did was so off, so unfocused, it's hard to believe and imagine that we can come up with some plans to actually address the problem. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Kimmel, and I'm a proud District 65 alum and a parent of two children at Walker School. My son is a striving learner, I think is the term that I've seen you all using in your materials lately, in the fourth grade. He has an IEP and a diagnosis of dyslexia and ADHD. I wanted to just share a few things, my insights, as I've been learning a lot about dyslexia and what my own son needs, and learning a lot about what our special education community needs and wants. An estimated 15% to 20% of the population has a language-based learning disability like dyslexia. Of students with specific learning disabilities receiving special education services, about 70% to 80% have deficits in reading. Paraphrasing the International Dyslexia Association, they define dyslexia as "a specific learning disability that is neurobiological in origin, characterized by difficulties with accurate and/or fluent word recognition, poor spelling, and poor decoding abilities. Students with dyslexia have secondary problems with comprehension, growth of vocabulary, and background knowledge. Dyslexia affects males and females nearly equally, as well as people from different ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds nearly equally. In general, people with dyslexia can have a high IQ, great teachers like those we have in District 65, and still fail to learn to read. However, educators and brain researchers now know that early intervention is essential to transformative remediation and developing alternative pathways in the brain. There's strong body of research, scholarly research, which shows that children with reading disabilities can learn to read with the right interventions. But some interventions that we're using in District 65 for the early grades, such as reading recovery, is a whole language approach that simply is proven to not work for students with dyslexia or other reading disabilities. And we simply do not have enough teachers qualified or certified to teach the appropriate interventions for students with these disabilities. The interventions proven to work for students with dyslexia are called structured literacy interventions based on the Orton-Gillingham approach. There are a number of reading programs based on the Orton-Gillingham approach, which vary, but they all use a highly structured multisensory approach. Two of these that we do use in District 65 are the Wilson Reading System and SLANT, which is an acronym for structured learning. We have 515 elementary-age students in District 65 receiving special education services, about 10% of our students. However, according to data that I just received from Joyce Bartz's office, only 11 teachers are certified to teach one of these interventions out of about 50 or more elementary special education teachers. Four elementary schools, Linkwood, Dewey, Walker, and Rhodes, do not have any teachers certified in these interventions. And as far as I know, or I've been able to gather, none of the reading specialists are trained in these programs. As you consider the professional development for the summer and beyond, which I saw is at the very end of the agenda, or at least information in the packet, I hope you'll consider investing in training more teachers in these programs that are, as a way to address both literacy and equity goals. In terms of equity, affluent families in Evanston basically right now are paying for private tutoring and other services from trained, teachers trained in these methods. At least anecdotally, in the district, there's even a bias towards providing these interventions to white privileged families. This is from our parent community on social media that, that I'm, it's obviously anecdotal, not, I don't have data to back that up, but it seems like it is the case, that if you're a white family, you're getting more, more access to these services. In addition, I'd say, if the statistics about undiagnosed dyslexia are correct, more students than those with IEPs would benefit from this type of structured literacy instruction. Training teachers in evidence-based interventions such as Wilson and SLANT at the, as the district moves towards supporting more differentiated instruction will pay off for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have some students that we're perhaps considering speaking. Can we entice you to join us at the podium here?
Hello. So I am a recent alumni of District 65. I'm a sophomore at ETHS, and I just brought a couple of friends to-
Can you please state your name?
Oh, yeah. I'm Bella Hubbard. So I just brought some friends to come look at this, and I'm here in support of OPALE. I have witnessed District 65's failure to support students of color, and I want to hold you guys accountable, and I 100% support everything that OPALE has been doing to keep you guys accountable and scream for equity. So, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else?
All right, just got to get over here.
I'm glad you came up. We always appreciate hearing from community members, and particularly hearing from students. So thank you for sharing your thoughts. Okay, with that, we will move on to our action items. Sergio, can you take that?
I'm with the Board of Education, accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion, improve the appointments, leaves, and separations. Notice of remedy? Approval of March 2018 Finance Committee and Board Meeting Minutes? Destruction of February 2016 Closed Session Audio Recording? February 2018 List of Bills? January, February 2018 Treasurer's Report and Budget Amendment? Summer 2018 Building Use Agreement? And an appointment of new school treasurer?
Second.
Cohen?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Hilpern?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Chow?
Yes.
Kartha?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have a couple of discussion items. The first one will be our Quarter Three Strategic Plan Progress Report.
And let me kick this off. Thank you. As we all know, we come every quarter to give an update on where we're at on our milestones with regard to our strategic plan. I want to remind the board and remind the audience that we presented a crosswalk with the strategic plan and our equity agenda, and so equity is our, part of our strategic plan, is what we're doing strategically, and our strategies embrace equity. So I want to make sure that we are very clear about that. As usual, we have a lot of work underway, and each of my colleagues are going to give a quick overview of their section and/or represent some of their colleagues, and they're, they're just about ready to go do this. And so I'm going to turn to Stacy on high-quality teaching and learning.
All right. So, yes, I will pick up from here. It's the easiest way to go with this. All right, so for Quarter Three, we had a number of things that we were working on, kind of walking through this. First around PLCs. We, so there is a strategy connected to our strategic plan that was really focused on building PLCs, professional learning communities. Professional learning communities have a very specific structure for a group of teachers to collaborate around. We have spent some considerable time and effort building out PLCs within our district work and our classroom work. This quarter, we decided we needed to step back a little bit from that strategy and acknowledge there are lots of different ways in which we can productively collaborate with each other. And so where we've gone a little bit with this strategy is to identify and build out multiple protocols that can support the way we use our time together productively as groups. And so there's work that's taking place at one of our schools this year that's very much focused on peer observation and critique around a particular focus area. So we've worked on our peer observation protocol. We've got other protocols that are focused on looking at data as we're working through our MTSS meetings. And so the work around PLCs this year, this quarter, is really focused on identifying a variety of strategies that can be implemented that improve the quality of collaboration of professionals at the district and the school level, and our goal is to continue to keep building out those protocols and allowing schools and teams to really determine what is the focus of our work and what's the tool that's going to best help us move that work forward. Next, we've, throughout the year, we've been focused on professional learning for our principals in both math and literacy. Last year, we started doing professional learning collaboratives where principals would gather at schools and have an opportunity to essentially kind of get a mini lesson on some of the work we're focusing on in our content areas, and then go into classrooms and observe that work together and debrief. Principals have said this is a really powerful and strong learning experience because frequently they don't have that opportunity to come together and observe instruction together with the kind of hands of a coach in the conversation, and it's allowing us to increase some of the consistency of support across schools by really taking a look at practice in classrooms and learning from each other, coaches with principals, principals with coaches. Additionally, curriculum's been looking at literacy assessment tools. We currently use DRA and EDL, DRA for English literacy, EDL for Spanish literacy. The tool is a tool that has not been realigned for the Common Core state standards, and so we've been looking for a tool that we feel better represents some of the demands of literacy instruction and literacy standards today. This process has been ongoing. We're hoping to ever- We're hoping to have a recommendation by the end of this year, by June. The challenge with this is that very few tools are built out where they really dive into the complexities of literacy in both English and Spanish. And from the very beginning of the search, we've been focused on a Spanish language tool and an English language tool that will allow us to do one-to-one literacy assessment, ideally across the levels of complexity of text. We're yet to find a tool that does the full levels of complexity of text in both languages. We have one vendor slash developer who has it built out through the end of third grade in Spanish and is committed to building it out to the end of fifth grade over the next couple of years. We have a couple other vendors who've just said the demand is not out there for dual-language classrooms, and they are not building those tools out. So we are looking at the best array of complements to strengthen our literacy assessment tools. We've also done significant work focused on MTSS this year. We really reframed our own work at the district level, as well as better supporting processes in school. Last year, we were very focused on Tool Lift, how to help people use the tool, the right intervention plans. This year was much more about, let's get into quality data conversations, problem-solving processes, and implementation of those plans. And that work was moving forward very strongly. We have, however, come to the conclusion that our current tool will not support our MTSS work in the way that is most supportive of our schools and teachers, and we will most likely be moving tools as we go into next year. But we found a tool with a lot of participation from district representatives that teachers strongly feel better supports the process. So we see being able to make that transition in a strong and positive way. And then lastly, the Oaken redesign team continues to meet on a monthly basis under the strong leadership of Wayne Williams and Deborah Osher, and with support from District 65. They've been very focused on realizing the STEAM vision or the STEAM umbrella through the use of project-based learning, and the teachers engaged in grade-level or specialty-area designed projects. And each grade level has completed one project-based learning unit, and they're in the process of kind of reflecting on and learning from that process, and there'll be a second engagement as they wrap up this year. So really kind of a shout-out to Oaken for the hard work and the commitment to taking on something new and really kind of diving in and learning in the process.
So let me turn to Beatrice on thriving workforce. And Beatrice, you can do a couple points as opposed to...
Thank you, because I was going to do three. So the first thing, I just want to say that in terms of recruitment, one of the things we did this year that I don't think the district has done in many years was that we hosted our own job fair here at District 65, and we weren't sure what the participation was going to look like, and we had over 130 attendees, which was really quite amazing. It was a great learning opportunity for us, and we were already thinking about how to improve that for next year, but it was just very exciting to know that we had so many people who were engaged and willing to come on a Saturday, and it was also St. Patrick's Day, so we were really pleased about that. The other thing that's been going on in Quarter Three is we've been diving a little deeper into the data that we received from our employee focus groups, actually last spring. So we've done work with our principals, with our hiring managers, and then with, you know, coordinating with Peter. We had Hanover Research come to do some focus groups with some of our employees so we could learn a little more information. And we're going to be using that as we try to develop an organizational plan moving forward to improve employee engagement across the district, but also we have a specific focus here at JH. And we will be doing another survey in the spring. And I think one of the things that's important about this survey is that we give it to every single employee has an opportunity to participate, where most of the data we've gotten in the past has come from 5E data, which is great, but it's for a select group of employees. And so the other employees did not have an opportunity to share their voice. So that's one really exciting thing about this. The other work that we just started doing with our paraprofessional group is that we are developing some lead paraprofessional roles, which will be stipend positions for current paraprofessionals that will allow us to provide mentoring, training, and some other supports that have not traditionally been in place, both for newly hired paraprofessionals as well as those who are in the district and just require some additional support and assistance. So we're excited about that work. And then Anzeli will share a quick update with some of the professional learning that he's been working with our principals on regarding racial equity.
So as you know, last year, we developed, Beatrice worked very closely with Corey Wallace to develop some questions and really strengthen the hiring process. And so this year, we really wanted to take a step further in terms of allowing our principals to go and really examine kind of racial identity development, implicit bias, and then really thinking about the way in which leading for equity, what that looks like on the ground in terms of their own competencies and capacity to support each other, but really also looking within. It's really easy to go external, but really you have to go, I won't say easy, I apologize, but more it's, I think that there is a tendency to move away from really looking within. And the work that we've done this year has really allowed our principals to really examine their own leadership blind spots, and then also to think about the way in which they approach the work, which I would argue is really important for our ability to then to hire for equity and to really think about who was coming into the room when we're engaging in our hiring practices. So it really is a part of strengthening our thriving workforce. And so I'm proud of the work they've done and have continued to do in preparation for
Turn to Peter on family and community engagement.
Yeah, so I'll start with talking a little bit about summer. The board reviewed the work of Jamila Pitts and others back in November as some of our key district-funded summer programs were being discussed. She continues to get us ready for that time, and at the same time, we've also been partnering with community partners to expand summer opportunities. So we've worked with the YMCA to make slots for 30 students available at Camp Echo this summer, with an emphasis on recruiting students of color and also working with the YMCA to make sure that the practices and procedures at the camp are gender-inclusive. We've also been working with Cradle to Career and with the Park District to give information directly to our families who qualify for a free and reduced-price lunch so that they can access reduced cost or free services from camps around Evanston without having to re-qualify themselves in terms of the income that their family makes. So trying to smooth the transition and make it easy for families. And Ellen Urquaga on my team has been really instrumental in getting that information to families in a timely way and making sure that they can take advantage of that. A third area, we've continued our partnership with District 202 and Northwestern around research, and we'll have a report for the board at the May meeting, the May joint meeting about some of the work that's been going on. We've developed a research agenda that is equity-focused. We have got folks in place at Northwestern and here at District 65 to smooth partnerships around research and make sure that we can accelerate doing that type of work. And so we look forward to being able to generate a great deal of insight from that work together, particularly focused on racial equity. And then last and probably next to last, this spring, we launched our affinity groups at a district level. So we now have had three of our four meetings for this year. We have six volunteer facilitators, three people who are white and three people of color. And so we began our work together in a joint session, doing some discussion about what affinity groups are and why we participated in them. And since that time, we've been meeting at the same time in this room with a well down the middle with a white affinity group and a people of color affinity group. And then last, and at least for me, most exciting, we've so far trained 400 staff members in either Beyond Diversity or SEED. Our SEED cohorts for the year will wrap up at the end of May. And in terms of Beyond Diversity, we've scheduled four Beyond Diversity sessions in June. We sent the invite out to staff last Friday, and we already have more than 130 people who have signed up. So we're really looking forward to trying to maximize our opportunity for people to have Beyond Diversity training in June. And then thanks to the support of the board, we're also able to offer Beyond Diversity to any remaining DEC members and many other staff during the institute days at the beginning of school. So we have been able to create a plan now where every classroom teacher, every DEC member, and most other people in the school district will have had Beyond Diversity training before we open school next year.
On safe and supportive climate, Anzeli, who are you going to cover for Joyce?
So first and foremost, we launched our final year of our school climate teams. Our final cohort began their work this year, and all of our school climate teams were able to really focus on developing their action and implementations plans. And this quarter, we are going to be reviewing them and thinking a bit more about the way in which we're calibrating all our plans across the system in terms of expectations and lifting that, as we know that establishing really the analysis and then developing plans is really a priority for us because we see the correlation to really all the other indices to supporting a safe and supportive school environment for our students. We also, this year, launched our SEAL classes in kindergarten first and fourth grade, and they've been monitored, and the feedback from those classes is being organized and will be part of a summer work that our social workers and teachers will work together to really do some revisions to the curriculum and think about ways in which to strengthen the curriculum for next year. And so we can build on that important work of the social-emotional learning and the practices that have come from that. And then last but not least, really thinking about the way in which we can begin to plan for engaging our families in really connecting to the climate teams. As you know, we really wanted to begin first from an internal perspective, really strengthening our teachers' ability and the teams in the school, and now really moving to thinking about how we can now connect more fully with our families and improving that.
Thank you. Now to Raphael for financial sustainability.
So we have listed here for Q3, we developed a five-year capital improvement program that was approved by the board in February. Unfortunately, we don't have the resources to be able to do more of the things that we would like to do as far as capital is concerned. So we are using the $1,025,000 that was earmarked from the referendum that was passed. Now, we're in the process of doing RFQ now to get contractors to start doing the work. We're waiting for those to come in. We also doing a long-range capital planning, which includes what we can afford and also what we don't have the means to be able to pay for right now. What it does, it provides us an opportunity to start looking financially as to how to be creative in being able to do more than the $1 million that has been earmarked from the referendum money. And the last item is that over the last year, we've been looking at our investment policy and trying to leverage the increases in yield that has been brought by the Federal Reserve to make sure that we get more return for the funds we have on hand.
And just to conclude, again, this is our ongoing commitment to report publicly on the milestones that we set at the beginning of the year and to really make the strategic work of the district alive, as opposed to sitting in a plan on a desk that after five years, you dust it off, you come to the board, and you create some sort of mass presentation. Instead, again, our commitment is to come quarterly, and most of the time, we're making progress. You can see where there's a few yellows here where we're on track, but we need to catch up a little bit. But again, it's our way of both checking ourselves and reporting back to the public on the work that we're doing. Leave it up for questions?
Questions? Board?
I have a couple of questions. Thanks, everyone. So it's great to see the progress. I have a couple of questions that kind of are more specific, but I'll start off a more general one. As Paul noted, the two of the categories, two of our areas were on target. Three of them were saying, you know, we have some catch-up. In general strokes, because we don't have anything to kind of compare it to, can you share where we are, we've either adjusted or we're not where we thought we were going to be relative to the plan? And so what, you know, indicated these ratings or what rankings?
I think for myself, in terms of the yellow, so the work that we just started with the lead paraprofessional, we just had our first meeting, which is technically now in Quarter Four, should have been in Quarter Three. So I think most of them are just the timing of it, that it didn't actually get either accomplished, you know, within that timeframe. I wouldn't say that, you know, I would say that everything is in progress and is expected to, for lack of a better word, be completed, as it should be. So the work that we're doing with the lead paraprofessionals, we're hoping to have this up and running for next school year, and that was the goal. So even though we were a little delayed in our first meeting, we believe we can still get the work done. Trying to think of what else. I think also, if I'm not mistaken, we were going to try and bring some additional information from the employee surveys. I think we're going to maybe have a draft a little bit earlier in Quarter Three, I believe. And so that's something that we've pushed back because we're not getting the data back in enough time in order to develop a plan, and it seems silly to start to develop a plan and then look at the data afterwards. So it's more about the timing of the work. Thank you.
Do we have information on safe and supportive school climate and financial sustainability? Why those are in yellow and where we may need to catch up?
The area where I can speak to, that's the second item, the long-range financial capital planning. What we try to do is focus on what we have the funds to be able to accomplish. That was the focus. And what we're trying to then do is between now and February of next year, include items that we don't have the means to pay for, but then look at creative way to try to get some resources to be able to pay for. So we focused on what we had money for to be able to do right now, and the plan is then to look at, because the master plan includes $105 million. And as it stands, we only have $1 million a year to be able to do that. So we decided to focus on that and try to get that done. And the second phase is then look at creative way to use our reserves to be able to maybe issue small bonds to be able to pay for some of those other increases, the rehab that needs to happen in those schools. That's the reason. So we needed time to be able to look at our finances and leverage that better. That's the thinking behind that.
And I don't think we feel prepared to talk to the safe and supportive school climate ones today.
All right. Well, then I have a specific about the climate, maybe...
Can I make just a general response to the general question? I'm actually really fine with yellow. I'm actually really fine with orange, and I'm actually really fine with red as well because in publicly reporting and being honest, there are going to be some times when we're not going to have everything done. The team at the senior level, along with our principals, along with a lot of the support staff who work in this building and across the schools, we do a lot all the time. And so part of the color coding is as much to say, we're making progress and we're adjusting appropriately, and we'll come back, especially if we have orange or red, we'll come back and say, here's the trade-offs. We're not going to be able to finish this project because we want to do this project. And I think that's an important part of honest dialogue between administration and the community.
Totally. I totally agree with that. It was just meant to just understand and understand the differences in are there trade-offs that we've been making?
Right.
I mean, I think you can look at places where it looks like we're ahead in terms of our expectation around training, the equity training to be concluded. I don't remember the exact schedule and timeframe, but it sounds like it's significantly ahead in terms of number, percentage of students.
It's between six and 12 months ahead.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's amazing, right? And so that's, so that has to come from somewhere. And I was just trying to understand where they are in the trade-offs debate. So it's hugely impressive that we've created such traction, and obviously, it's reflective of the demand and the interest in the community and the commitment of the community on that work as well, that probably way outstripped what, maybe what we expected there to, you know, to be such traction so quickly. So thank you for that. And I just was trying to understand, like, you know, you guys have to do all that planning, and where does that come from? And how is that impacting what else we're doing? The only other question I have are on climate teams too, and I guess it somewhat relates to the FYI and to the comments earlier around discipline and suspensions, is I'm curious as to whether we have looked, since we do have a final set of schools, and I'm not sure which schools those are, if there's any interconnection between the suspension data and the disciplinary data and those schools that have either been ahead or earlier, started the climate teams more earlier or later? Because it clearly, I mean, it does look like there are few schools that are driving the increase, which is very, you know, it's disheartening to see now two years of us going back up in terms of the suspension and the disciplinary action. And I'm just curious as to whether there's work within those climate teams to focus on that data specifically, and maybe it's just a thought after the fact, whether we can look at correlation because as between how mature the climate teamwork is versus how that's... is versus how that's showing up in in the disciplinary data. Because clearly, when we talked about all this four years ago, I remember the word antecedent being used by Joyce several times, and I had to go back and look up what antecedent meant. That's sad, but but it made huge sense to me that we have to have, we have to understand what comes in front of and what's causing, what are the precursors and what are the conditions that are causing what's happening in the disciplinary action? And the big work is the prevention work that we're putting in place through the climate teams and through the, you know, through the social justice work and and the restorative justice work. And so it's it's hard now as we look, it seems like there, you know, we've we've put more effort in and yet the results are changing. So at a future time, maybe if you could share with us whether there is any connection between the timing of climate teams kind of, you know, maturity and whether there's those particular schools are seeing better results or not, I would be curious there because it's clearly a point of the impetus originally.
I've noted the question.
Thanks.
That's a good question.
I would just say, so we haven't specifically looked at that question and we could, but I think what Joyce has planned, I know what Joyce has planned because I'm helping her, is to look a step before what you're what you're suggesting. So we could look at the correlation of how developed your climate team is and therefore what results are you getting in terms of discipline incidents? And what I think Joyce has taken as her first focus is, let's look at the quality of the plans that are coming out of the teams and let's look at the perceptions of the folks who are on the school climate teams through a survey. Those are things that we're doing in the next couple of months so that as she plans for what do we do now that every team has launched, that there can be more customized support. And she'll be looking not just at, you know, what are the outcomes that that are that we're seeing in each school, but also what are the ways in which, or what do we know about each school in terms of what's happening in their climate teams, in terms of the quality of the plans that are being produced and in terms of the perceptions of the team members so that the support she's providing can be customized and in places where, you know, maybe maybe a team has been working, but they are not yet achieving the desired outcome, that some additional guidance and support can be provided so that they can achieve that outcome that they're looking for.
Thank you. Additional questions?
So I have just some questions. So again, thank you for, again, giving us this quarterly update on the work that we do on a strategic plan. And again, you know, some of the questions I asked earlier in my statement, I mean, I see that we're working towards in regards to, again, giving our marginalized folks an opportunity and access to the best service that we can provide as a district. So I appreciate all the work that we're all doing as administration, as a school board, and our community members keep pushing us. You know, in regards to assessment, wondering if you, in in looking for literacy, like a proper literacy assessment, is there any thought in regards to maybe considering finding a literacy-based assessment, a literacy assessment, but also that's something that that, because I want to move beyond just reading and math scores, right? And really broaden the way we measure children. So I'm OK with having math scores and park scores and IELTS scores, but that's just one part of the picture in regards to when we talk about kids and how they develop and progress through, you know, through school and through school year. Is there any thought of looking at performance-based assessments to kind of help enrich the way we look at student performance?
So we, so the what I was reporting on there is that we are very, we were very specific at looking for a literacy tool to meet a need because we know we really need a reliable way to measure early literacy in our district. And what we have is OK, but we would like stronger. We are, there are early discussions about whether there are possibilities for reworking. We know there's room for improving our assessment system and our assessment tools. It is a sizable project when it comes to identifying tools, when it comes to thinking about change management, making sure things are really reliable measures. And so there are conversations about ways in which we can improve our assessment tools and whether we are looking at the right things right now or if we need a broader scope. So it is definitely in our line of sight, and we're trying to figure out the right ways to approach that work.
And we have a couple of things that we'll provide for information for the board. We have a consultant, Godilia Lopez, who used to be at the Chicago Community Trust, where we used to work at CPS, and she's done, she's finishing up a sort of broad-brush scan of assessments and what does it really mean? What does it really mean when the board or we say we want to assess social emotional learning? What's the lift on that? So it will be an information piece and it will, it will be something that we'll be able to provide the board. Stacy's point about this being a pretty big lift, as we think about the execution of our multi-tiered systems of supports, we have to also think about an aligned assessment system. And we we're making really great progress. That's a green, that's a bright green in terms of making progress, and we want to make sure that we're aligned there and not starting something new while we are actually close to focusing on that work. And that work really focuses on kids at the 25th percentile of performance or below. So that's also part of the the lift. So we'll we'll continue to do that work and then we'll move forward and think about what what it really means to do new assessments. We also have to, this is sort of a sidebar, but I'll put it on the table, the Illinois State Board of Education, which you're familiar with, is coming out with a new accountability system, and it's going to penalize those districts that have less than 95% park participation. And so if we have less than 20, than 95% park participation, then our schools will not be able to get into the highest category of outstanding accountability. We're we're subject to that as part of accountability, and that's going to be part of the arm wrestling that will go on as we continue with the degree to which the state will continue park or park-like assessments and then what do we do next?
And I also appreciate administration looking at a Spanish assessment that can give us that complete picture. And wondering if you've approached the WIDA consortium, I think that they are, I think they're starting to develop an Spanish assessment, but but I'm not, I'll have to get back to those folks, but I thought they were.
Yeah, well, feel free to shoot us anything. There are tools out there that are focused on accomplishing different things.
Yeah.
And so there are a series of tools we use. This one is really diving into kind of those, into establishing rate, fluency, and comprehension as opposed to some of the early language acquisition pieces that we have as well. But shoot anything our way.
Wonderful. Yeah. And the reason I bring that up is I I've run into parents who are part of the two-way immersion program and, you know, they, many feel that that Spanish isn't being assessed and valued as much as the, as their children's progression to English, right? If you get what I'm saying. So if we can find something that, again, can show that, you know, children are growing in both languages, right? Specifically, our, you know, our Spanish, you know, students, it'd be just something that's incredible that parents have been asking about, at least for me as a board member to kind of share with them.
As a point of clarification, we do have a Spanish language assessment. It is the partner to DRA, and so we do absolutely measure students' ability to acquire essentially their Spanish literacy as well as their English literacy. This is about getting to a higher quality assessment.
Right. And then, you know, just building off of the MTSS, the multi-tiered systems of support, I know the State Board of Ed is offering pyramid trainings, right, which is from your old wheelhouse at the castle, and they're doing statewide trainings for early childhood programs. So that, which will tie into, again, some of the current MTSS work that we're doing. So just I would, I will share that information as well.
OK, please do. And Donna Cross, who is the MTSS coordinator, has been working with JEH.
OK, wonderful.
And she has partnered, and JEH has been a good partner and really kind of hooking up and working on their MTSS processes.
Wonderful, wonderful. And then one more question around, you know, some of the summer programs and after-school enrichments that are offered. Again, a complaint I often hear from parents, at least, you know, marginalized parents, right, is that, you know, they 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 don't know about these opportunities. So it's really great that we that we're, again, creating scholarships and working with our institutional partners to provide some opportunities for folks and being deliberate about, you know, targeting marginalized families and communities to take advantage of these opportunities of enrichment. What I keep hearing from folks in the community is that we, you know, that, is there a list out there? Is there is there something that that the that the district or the city can provide in regards to giving parents a heads up on when they could register for these things or register for summer camps or, you know, after-school music programs or what have you? So I think that's what, just to let you know, I mean, that's what I'm hearing out there from parents, is that they'd like to kind of get a heads up. And we know, I know as a parent, right, that, and we all know, if you have a kid and you're trying to get into summer programs, you know, the the time to do it is around January, right, and even December. I mean, and those things just fill up right away. So how do we help folks who don't even have a clue how to navigate that, you know, try to access that information and, you know, give their kids a chance and get them wedged into some of these great enrichment programs that, again, will work wonders in the classroom if they're they're exposed to these enrichment opportunities?
A number of our programs that we do sponsor through District 65 Funds that we looked at through the November memos are specifically targeted towards striving student populations. And the way we go about doing that in order to ensure that kids that have the greatest need are in those seats is that the schools reach out directly to the families. And so there's a lot of direct outreach to help ensure that students and families that can best benefit from those programs within their targeted schools and zones are contacted and made aware of those opportunities. But we are clearly in a position where, you know, we are not able to offer as much as we, you know, as much as a need would want. But I do clearly hear ways in which we can try to communicate outward for programs that are open for enrollment.
Thank you.
I just had, I wanted to thank you for the additional training for multi-tiered systems of support and just a recommendation or suggestion in how we how we educate our community members about that, especially parents who aren't aware of those services and when it comes up, similarly to how we do for IEPs. I think it's a fairly new term for for families, so I'm glad to see that there's an expansion in training, but just I think our families need to be a little bit better well-informed about how we're using those tools.
Yeah, that's a very fair and appropriate push. We've been working on some of the parent communication pieces this spring, but definitely appreciate that that feedback.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on the question around social emotional learning assessments, and I know it's something that we've talked about previously and have an understanding that that is, adding these assessments can be a pretty heavy lift and understanding that was not something that was necessarily going to be accomplished this year. But the the consultant in that report that you're referencing, are we going to get that before the end of the school year? Like, is that something that will be in the upcoming?
Yeah. And whether it's a FYI and then we can talk about it at a future date.
OK.
And she's got a sort of, again, it's a descriptive landscape of the state-of-the-art of social emotional learning assessment, which, got to the chase, spoiler alert, it's not a sophisticated field yet and there's not really great assessments out there. But she'll give, she gives some descriptions of that, so we'll.
But she'll give some descriptions of what other districts are doing who have implemented some?
The landscape is is more what's out there in the field and I don't want to misquote, so I have to go back and look at the draft that she has.
Yeah, if there is a way to include just, you know, some examples from other school districts that are engaging in the work.
Right.
That.
She has broad-brush descriptions of assessment programming in in other districts, but whether or not that includes the SEL, I'm going to have to check.
OK. And then, you know, that, if we can get that before the end of the year, then before we have the discussion of, you know, planning for next year, I think that could be, because I think we do have to understand what is the lift on that and then balance that out with other priorities for the upcoming year and knowing that there are other potentially big lifts that that are on the way. And then going back to safe and supportive school climates for just a minute. And I think, you know, Dr. Goran and I have talked about that this is, I think, you know, an area where there is a lot of interest, but maybe not as much understanding of what's happening. So I think we're going to try to get it on an agenda for a board meeting before the end of the year to have a more in-depth discussion around what's happening on school climates. And then I think we can address some of those questions that Candace brought up. I did want to just ask, you know, I think one other thing in the the meetings that we've been having monthly with DEC leadership, you know, some of the feedback that initially we're getting is that there's, you know, there's a school, school climate teams who are obviously very intimately engaged in the work, but that isn't necessarily being, you know, we have, I think we have to be a little bit more thoughtful on how are we communicating that with other, the sit teams or the PBIS teams or other teams at the school and then just with the the school community more broadly. I think some of the initial feedback that we're hearing is that if teachers aren't on those committees, they're not necessarily fully aware of what kind of work is being done. So I know, I think, Peter, you said something about there's going to be some surveys of the climate teams to be able to more, to tailor what is happening, but maybe consider, is there a way to also get some feedback more broadly? Or at least, even if the feedback is initially just from the school climate team, how is that going to be shared out more broadly so that the school community as a whole can feel more engaged with the the work of the climate teams? But that's not a question to be answered now. Again, I think that's something that we can talk through more thoroughly when we have a broader discussion on that. And I think that's all I had. Were there any other questions? OK. Well, thank you very much. It's always impressive to hear about all the work that is is happening in the district and on the strategic plan, so thank you for that. We will move on to access to innovate technology update.
I have a minute just to get this up and going. All sorts of technical breaks.
It's a perfect shot. Oh, there you go. There's one.
All right. I'll go ahead as we're kind of getting this set, because I know that you have a couple slides there as well. And I'll talk, it's too little leader boy getting slide right. All right. First, I just want to thank you for your time tonight. I'm going to take a few minutes tonight really to do an update around technology focused primarily on the middle school. This update connects back to essentially two board conversations we had last year. In December of 2017, we came to the board to share the Digital Promise work that was happening in grades five through eight at King Arts and six through eight at SHUT. Digital Promise had created an opportunity for one-to-one iPad technology for the students in those two schools. We were in year three of that grant. We came to the board to really share what we were learning from this process and some of the shifts that we were seeing in teaching and learning, to really say that this was a program that was valued and that there was a desire and intent to be able to continue this program should we be able to secure funding to do that. The referendum that was passed last spring gave us the opportunity to be able to continue the program and spread this program across our middle grades, sixth through eighth grade across the district. And so tonight is an opportunity to give you a little bit of an update in regards to where we have gone with the planning work. Let's just do it this way. All right. Over the last, essentially, the last 12 months, because the last time I was at the board was in June, so it's about talking about this work. This gives, for those that are relatively new to this, just a little bit of background. With this is now officially known as Access to Innovate, and the memo explains that a little bit, and I'll explain it a little bit in a couple of minutes. But this work did start with a grant from Digital Promise with support from Verizon and just almost four years ago. Specifically, the work started at SHUT and King Arts, thanks to the leadership of Jeff Brown and Jim McCollum and the teachers and the leaders in those buildings. in those buildings, we really saw an opportunity for teachers to dig in with kids and find ways to use technology to further strengthen the teaching and learning that was happening in those schools. Since the referendum commitment, we have been working forward on a number of different things. We completed the evaluation of some of our District 65 Digital Promise programs. We really focused on reaching out and learning from other districts, and so we've been in contact with five different districts, really probably six different districts around Illinois, and one in Minnesota, in order to learn about their work using one-to-one technology, in some cases, schools that were using Chromebooks, in some cases, schools that were using iPads. But really to understand not about the device, but about what's the power for teaching and learning, and based on our goals for teaching and learning, what were the right decisions that we needed to make for devices, professional learning, support, structures, all those things. We have also listened to our stakeholders at King Arts and SHUT about what supports would they want around instruction, what supports do they need improved around systems and structures, because everybody is clear that as we move to district-wide next year, which would be focused on sixth grade, we need to be on the same page about our processes, our systems, and our goals in order to help this go well. We also did pilot both Chromebooks and iPads with teachers in the schools that had not already been using devices. So, Vessi Roads, Nichols, and Haven, they had an opportunity to have a one-to-one cart in their classroom dedicated. They had iPads for half the time, Chromebooks for half the time. We then conducted focus groups with the teachers, the students, and then also had a kind of a technology spreadsheet survey that allowed teachers to sound in on what each of the devices did best aligned with kind of our goals and needs for those devices. We did arrive at the decision to continue with iPads and expand that across the district. The kind of key piece that came out of conversation from our teachers was that the iPads create an opportunity to shift the ways in which we allow kids to demonstrate what they know and can do. Chromebooks, we do, a lot of the work that we do already are supported by Chromebooks. We do a good amount of publishing, we do a good amount of collaboration, we can continue to do those things on iPads, but we also have additional multimedia capacities where students frequently will reach out and find other ways to demonstrate their learning through video and audio, which is easier and has greater mobility on the iPads than the Chromebooks. So, we're at a point where we are looking at rolling out the devices in sixth grade across the district next year, and continuing the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade at King Arts and SHUT, and we'll continue to support the fifth grade at King Arts, which has had the devices over the last four years as well. The work that we've been doing is outlined kind of by category in the memo as well. There's a lot of attention to systems and structures, how are we going to deal with rollouts, how are we thinking about digital citizenship, what are we doing around professional learning, to really make sure that we're thinking about all the necessary categories. We now have a lot pulled there coming out back here, to make sure that we are thinking robustly about the work that we need to do. We are also engaging principals and teachers in this process, and have a planning team that is, at this point, I think, nine different folks that have voice, some are representative of external partnerships, some are teachers, some are administrators in the district, in order to inform the work that we're doing. One of the things when we talked about, for some of you, this will be a repeat video, but I think it's worth touching base on it. When we talked to teachers last year at King Arts and SHUT, they said that the technology really allowed them to differentiate, it allowed them to become increasingly responsive to kids' interests and needs, and it allowed them to be able to, allow students to create greater agency in their own learning. So if we have a device that can allow kids to pursue different ways to demonstrate their learning, or to investigate and research an area of interest, it creates much greater flexibility for us as teachers and as educators in the district. It also creates greater flexibility for us as people who are thinking about issuing curriculum in the district. And in the process of doing this, the teacher said to us, you know, this really allows our kids to be increasingly future-ready. And this is a video that was put together last year, I think it will be, let's see if we can get it going, which is embarrassing since it's a technology presentation. That will give us a quick kind of summary of some of the things they saw. Sorry for that. Sorry, that was to get rid of that bubble. I apologize.
Just turn it off.
There, it's coming.
We can, we will, we are ready for our future.
All right. I think one of the things that video does a nice job, it's going to tee up a little bit more of our conversation, but it really captures the fact that this is a tool in creating active and engaged and exciting learning. And so it's that action piece that is incredibly important as we think about this work. And I don't want to be cranky one more time. All right, there we go. So, this then shifts a little bit to our conversation. So why Access to Innovate? First off, Digital Promise was a grant, and it was a support for the work. District 65, thanks to the support of the community, has made a commitment to taking on this program, owning this program, expanding this program, and using it to expand the learning opportunities that our students have. When we met through a series of focus groups with teachers, pilot teachers, existing teachers in the program, talked with students, there was a pattern of the types of things that came up in these conversations about why they found this important. One was around access. One of the points that was raised in the conversation is, not only do we have the opportunity to create access to learning for students in and out of school, we have an opportunity to put it on a platform that is shared and similar for kids, so that the tools that we're working on helping kids use to navigate learning and understanding are available to all kids. Even in a situation where you might have, you're bringing your own technology or device, kids have different tools that they have access to, and it doesn't always allow for the same level of collaboration around learning tasks. And so they talked about the power of access, the fact that kids had equitable access in and out of building, and that they could connect with each other, and connect with learning in a powerful way. The other thing they talked about was the opportunity for this tool to create innovation. Over the last couple of years, we have offered tech innovation grants to our teachers around the district, and teachers have applied to say, you know what, I think I can do something differently, in a better and more exciting way, that's going to engage learning and drive learning in a different way. And teachers at King Arts and SHUT and other folks started, really started thinking about the same way, even in our pilot teachers. They said, you know what, we measure understanding one way right now, but with these tools, we could actually think about measuring understanding in a different way, or we can set up learning with greater flexibility, so that kids have different levels of access to that learning. And so, as we really kind of conducted these conversations, we really landed on the idea that what we're promoting here is a long shot from, here's a device to help you learn. It's about creating access to innovate, to improve learning opportunities for students. And so what we look at, look at here is Access to Innovate is the way we've branded the program, because it needs to be about learning. And that's really kind of what we spell out here. It's about the learning and the shifts in the opportunity we have with learning. In order to kind of underline this, we identified a framework that we really think can support these ideas. And this is the Triple E framework, which is developed out of University of Michigan. And what the group really liked about this framework is that it puts learning at the center. A lot of times, people will talk about the SAMR framework or other frameworks, there's value there, but it's always talking about the role of technology. The way the Triple E comes at this is, they say that student learning goals have got to be in the middle of this whole thing. If the technology is not advancing our ability to help for students to be master in student learning goals, then we need to rethink the way we're using the technology. And so the Triple E framework pushes us and challenges us to use technology in three ways: to increase engagement, to extend, so create engagement focused on learning goals, extend the opportunities for students to be engaging in learning goals, and enhance their opportunities to engage and achieve learning goals. Just so we're kind of clear on this, when we talk about our learning standards, we are absolutely talking about common core, we're talking about NGSS, we're talking about our world language standards, we're talking about our national core art standards, we're talking about the standards of our discipline, and the way that technology can help elevate the way that we approach and achieve and understand and apply those learning standards. We also, you know, in the last memo as well, raised the ISTI standards, and ISTI is important here because they are the technology standards. There's a nice degree of alignment with, for instance, when we talk about creative communicators, that comes through in all sorts of other standards. But they're also, and computational thinker does as well, but there are also ideas around global citizenship and digital citizenship that are important for us to pay attention to, and that's part of our planning process as well. Just walking through these three elements of the Triple E framework, when you talk about engaging, the Triple E framework really calls out three things. One, can technology help to create a greater focus on those student learning goals? Can it create motivation for students to dive into those learning goals in a faster way or in a deeper way? And does it create active learning? One of the concerns that we do hear from parents is, kids have enough screen time. Are they just going to be in classroom looking at the devices? That is not the way we envision the use of technology. We see technology as a tool in which students can engage in their learning and social ways in which they're dialoguing and partnering with each other. It may be on a shared device, it may be on adjacent devices, but they're working through learning problems and challenges in an active way. This framework, one of the things we really like about it is, you know, it talks about shifting kids from being passive to active social learners. If we challenge kids to address problems, to take on challenges, to take greater ownership of how they're going to attack their learning by giving them tools, they can become increasingly active in their learning and in the social discourse around their learning, and the way they share their learning with others. The second E in the Triple E framework is enhancement. Can the technology, our charge is to use the technology in a manner that will enhance our way to access learning goals. And so, the key here, it says, can't with traditional. If we can do it better without the technology, we should continue to do it without the technology. There are going to be times in the teachers' classrooms where they're going to, the iPads will be face-down, and they should be face-down. The tool, the technology is used to enhance, to increase engagement, or extend the learning. There are times when it does not need to be used, because it's not the best tool for the moment. And so the framing of this work is, we are adding a tool to support a positive and further strengthening of learning in the building. It should, on the enhancement side, be able to increase the sophistication, support greater scaffolds, when we talk about how we differentiate kids, create individual learning paths, allow kids to access text at different reading levels, allow kids to demonstrate what they've known in different ways. And again, if it can be done better without the tech, do it without the tech. It is a tool that can help us do better things for kids in classrooms. And when it isn't, you should put it down and use a pencil. The last piece of the Triple E is extending. This is an opportunity to extend our learning goals in order to connect with the world beyond us. There are a number of really strong intersections between the Triple E framework, our equity work, and culturally responsive and relevant teaching. And this is a place where this fits as well, and I'll kind of connect to that in a quick second. But when we talk about extending learning, when we talk about thinking about bringing some of the things that happen from outside of school into school, technology and devices, engaging in conversations with people in different places, collaborating with experts, collaborating with other students, connecting with other teachers, connecting with kids in other cultures, our opportunity is to extend learning, that is not necessarily possible without kind of that readily, ready access to technology. Additionally, kids have the opportunity to bridge learning, as we're talking about and working with some of our partners, including MetaMedia and Northwestern. There are opportunities to be able to do work inside of school that then can connect to out-of-school, after-school opportunities. There's some exciting work going on with Northwestern, with Digital Divas, with MetaMedia, that they were able to create some links, and there's some early conversations about how to seed some projects in school, that kids could then continue out of school through a learning platform that Evan Sten and Northwestern have been working on in conjunction. So there are ways to connect to outside partnerships, and really be able to seed learning inside of school, and allow kids to then pursue those passions outside. So this idea of extending our learning goals, allowing kids to bring things from the outside, as well as for us to take our learning out of the building, and allow it to influence or change things within society, because then we become producers, we become consumers as opposed to, sorry, we become producers as opposed to just consumers of learning. So I mentioned briefly connections to equity. The team that I'm working with, and myself, feel very strongly that the iPad is a tool that can advance some of our ideas around culturally responsive and relevant pedagogy. This is kind of a visual that we're using as an early representation of some of our culturally responsive teaching, thinking, and work. At the heart of this is, and one of the pushes from Ms. Waretta Hammond, is that this is actually really about increasing the cognitive load and the work that kids are doing. It's about increasing the relevance and the rigor of what's happening for kids, and supporting them in ways that they can become increasingly independent. And when we think about this work, kids need to be able to connect to things that are meaningful in their own reality, and that enrich content. And so that's that relevant aspect to them, and that has meaning to them. The use of the iPads, one of the things King Arts and SHUT teachers said to us was, having the technology allows kids to pursue and research those areas, and come to us and say, let us take the learning this way. Let us, can I research this avenue instead of that, because it is more meaningful to me? And so it creates opportunities for greater flexibility around the explorations and the way we demonstrate those learning standards. It also creates opportunities for greater reflection, video, audio, writing, peer feedback, allowing kids to set goals and reflect within spaces that are easily accessible to them through the iPad, and able to communicate back and forth with teachers. Collectivism, as we dive in on projects with kids, and we're creating greater collaboration with each other, kids have that opportunity to support each other. They also have an opportunity to feel more connected from school to out-of-school, and out-of-school to in-school. And so thinking about the type of learning and opportunities that we need to create, we see opportunities for increased agency for kids, we see opportunities for increased relevance, and opportunities for kids to be able to build in deeper levels of reflection and goal-setting, and then there's that pathway for differentiation. We also heard teachers say, you know what, kids are able to dive in and enter a task at their level, and not feel like, I got the blue sheet, and they got the pink sheet, and that means that I, you know, I'm not doing it as well. You know, so there are ways of, and we don't use blue and pink, that was exaggeration. But kids are very perceptive about what's happening around them. So, you know, this update was really intended to give you a sense of how we have shifted, and not, how we are beginning to elevate the way we're thinking about this work. We have devices that will be coming in for teachers, and will be distributed to teachers in the next couple of weeks, and we're working with principals right now to kind of tee up what roll-up and all of those things look like. We've also started to do some engagement, I did meet with a group of parents at Haven through their PTA, to share some of these ideas, and begin to get word out. There will be more information coming to those families, that kind of similar to the one-to-one handbooks and processes that we've used over the last couple of years. The memo has the detailed updates, but what I really wanted to do was frame the learning aspects of this, and where we've gone around branding for our conversation, but I'm open to questions on whichever direction we want to go.
Anybody want to start off?
Are they the new iPads?
They are the new... They are the new iPads. They're the new iPads. So we are not buying pencils for everybody, however.
Okay. Well, it was just neat, Tim Cook, the CEO of Apple, was in our city last month, did a really awesome presentation. I encourage anybody who hasn't seen that presentation on just how to utilize the new iPad in the classroom and the additional resources that are going to be available not only to teachers but to parents and students. So that's really exciting.
There are some very nice, Apple has made, done some very nice work updating the devices and making them increasingly supportive of school environments. And interestingly, the Shoot and King Arts teachers were strongly in favor of maintaining the iPads. In the areas where they said the device, though, could do these things better, there are a number of those areas that Apple has addressed in their most recent upgrades, including the ability of multiple windows and things along those lines. And so the devices are really, they've made some nice moves to make them even more supportive of teaching and learning.
I'm Adleek Calgady and I went to the Tim Cook presentation at Lane Tech and it was fascinating. And it fits everything that Stacy's really pushing here, which is it's grounded in learning. The tool is grounded in learning and really stimulating the kids to be engaged.
I just want to say a huge thank you, Stacy, for being someone who, I don't know how long ago, 2013, was advocating a shift in our use of technology to focus on the learning. And I think you use the word shift, that it's been, this is a transformation from the way we approached the use of technology and the way we're looking at it as an enabler for learning versus let's use technology and what are we going to buy? And so just a huge thank you for that because I don't know that, we haven't all been here for this evolution, but I can see it very clearly. And there's been concern over the years, obviously, of the increased use of technology and warranted concern from parents of how's this, how's this going to be used and more screen time, as you pointed out. And to keep at the forefront how we're going to ground it in innovation and meeting students' needs versus which device we're using or et cetera is so important. And so I just, I just want to thank you for that. And the team, everybody as well.
Thank you. I will definitely share, there's a good team of people that remind me about what's important very frequently.
Sure. It is very exciting. I had just a question. Is the grant that we've been accessing ending?
It ended this past year.
Okay. So this is all just in line with where your department's going, in line with budget and everything like that?
Yes. Yep, it's supported by, there's some referendum money that was committed to this, we're within budget on that, those dollars.
You know, I can, I can, well, number one, thank you for this work and then again trying to make a very intentional focus on, I really enjoyed the, again, that this lends how we utilize technology to, again, build up the cognitive processes of kiddos. In my own case, I have a kiddo who's got a 504, right? But again, this helps for that specific situation. So the beauty of technology, to be able to tailor it to the specific needs of a child, right? Meeting kids where they're at, which is part of our equity work, I think is just very critical. So when I have, you know, the discussions, the IP meetings, the domain meetings, you know, that this is what we talk about, you know, what can we do? What can we use? What tools can we use in order to make learning accessible to my son? And, you know, again, this is, this is part of the solution and I think, I really appreciate the work that you and Shoot and then folks over at King Arts have done to really push technology as a way to get kids that access and opportunity that I talked about earlier.
Very specifically, you know, there was strong advocacy from special educators in the district as well as English language or ESL teachers in regards to some of the power of the tools and the opportunities to create, you know, behind us is finding ways that kids become increasingly independent, taking on really challenging learning tasks and the tools help them to do that.
I also am very excited about this. I think this is, you know, a great time for the kids to be introduced to this technology and it's exciting the way it's going to be implemented in the classroom. I know it's mentioned, I know you mentioned it briefly when you started speaking and it's mentioned briefly in the memo, but can you elaborate a bit more on the steps that you're looking into taking in order to minimize bullying and any of the other negative aspects of introducing access to the internet and technology in the classroom?
So the devices are filtered and so there's opportunity to control aspects through the filter. We also do have a series of digital citizenship lessons that all students have prior to getting devices. And then we have another wave of digital citizenship lessons that we put in place later in the school year. We are, the team is in the process right now of reviewing those lessons and identifying if there are other aspects that we need to work in. And we're looking at, in our sixth grade, we have the advisory 2.0 class. Some of the feedback was that in the first 20 days, that we have some opportunities there to build in some of those digital citizenship and digital literacy lessons in to the advisory 2.0 while also spreading some of the learning across content areas. Because the feedback has been that it's great to have it in one place, but you need to be speaking the same language across the school. And so we're moving and kind of identifying the right lessons and the right placement of those lessons. Some will occur prior to getting devices, some will occur as we move along in the school year. The librarians also, in a recent meeting, were going to take a look at King Arts, for instance, and I'm going to goof this up, I'm going to say the, I think it's the state's attorney, was out to do a presentation recently. The librarians in the district are taking a look at putting together a couple of different events across the year to also support family education on those matters so that we can be running kind of in that same, you know, really around the same focus of keeping our kids safe. And one of the pieces that came up in our Haven conversation is the reality is the vast majority of our kids have phones in sixth grade. And so the introduction of the iPad device isn't necessarily introducing a new threat. In fact, the iPad is, with the filter, probably quite a bit safer than the phone device, but what it does speak to is a need that we need to address anyway, to help our kids understand their digital footprint, the appropriate uses of technology and how to keep kids safe and how to essentially create a respectful environment digitally as well. So we are going to review those lessons. We're also looking at our scope and sequence. We start in second grade, so second grade through eighth grade, just as part of this, to say, do we need to go back and make sure that certain lessons are occurring, which we probably have some work to do there.
That's great. I think that, you know, you mentioned something that I actually want to help elaborate on is that, you know, sixth grade is also a time that a lot of kids are getting access to their own device to use outside of school for the first time as well, at least a bit more unmonitored, and that it can leave the house with the student. And so it seems like a really fantastic opportunity for the schools, the students, and the parents to all work together to make sure that our kids are staying safe and that they know the responsibility that they have with the devices and the responsibility that they have to themselves and to each other. So I think that's a, it's a really great opportunity to be able to bridge that conversation, I think.
Yep. And I think, you know, the principals, Dr. Brown and Mr. Jim Holland have been great about realizing too, that when missteps have been taken, that we need to turn them into learning opportunities and really doing that.
Excellent, thank you.
My question, you know, I echo the excitement that people, the board members are sharing for this program. I think you've laid it out really well and very clearly what the focus of the technology and why we're introducing it is. I just wanted to highlight one thing, you know, I think in the past, when the district has rolled out something like this, then there are concerns that, you know, there isn't the proper support for teachers around learning for this. So I wanted to highlight, you do talk in the memo about professional learning opportunities over the summer. And in particular, I was hoping you could maybe talk a little bit about the innovation coaches and how that is going to support teachers.
Yeah, we're doing a couple of different things. Over the summer, we will have some optional PD. We're going to do a two and a half day institute where teachers can opt to come in and actually kind of have a couple of different learning pathways that they can join in order, and some time for collaboration for them to think about, what have I learned and how do I want to use these devices in order to kind of align with the triple E framework? There are also some online learning opportunities through Google certifications and Apple teacher, where teachers can engage in this learning over the course of the summer and earn CPTUs. So they can do that kind of at their own leisure as they, as they decide they want to engage, they don't need to be in a fixed time or space. Then what we are doing is with Digital Promise, one of the aspects of the Digital Promise grant was that there was a coach at each of those sites, the Shoot site and the King Arts site, Regina Colquitt and Gary Sapinko. The feedback, when we really dug into District 65, into the Digital Promise piece, was that these coaches were really essential for onsite support. Because they become the ones who kind of say, you know, if somebody says, hey, I'm thinking about this, all right, let's give it a try. Let's, you know, I'll pop in in the classroom and I'll support you in doing that. Or I'm thinking about a way to rethink this lesson, do you have some thoughts around, you know, about how technology could enhance this lesson? And so they're thought partners, they're kind of the coach on the side that'll help you as you try something out in the classroom, and they're also a quick set of hands that help sometimes with the logistics of the program as well. And so we, as part of the funding, we are creating two new positions that are innovation coaches. We've, moving away from the Digital Promise grant name to innovation coaches. So we'll retain the two that we have and we've added our offices here and we'll add to. And what that does is it creates an opportunity for us essentially to have a primary coach at the three larger schools and then have a coach that's shared across the two magnets. When we think about teachers and classrooms, it's an equivalent ratio, it's a pretty equal ratio. In order to work with teachers, to support onsite professional development and to kind of partner up shoulder to shoulder with teachers and do some of the work in classrooms as we begin to think about the ways in which technology can enhance, engage, and extend learning in our buildings. The, there's, in the FYI today also, there are four curriculum, some are professional development projects that are available for teachers to partner up also and take a look at an existing curricular unit, neither ELA, literacy, math, or science, and to say, oh, sorry, science, social studies, math, or literacy. For them to then take a current unit and say, how might we want to shift this unit now that we know that iPads will be in our sixth graders' hands? And so another place for that innovation coach to connect would be around those units. So you guys did the redesign work over the summer, how can I help implement this? And, you know, kind of document and continue to revise this so these units go well. And so their onsite instructional coaching support and the way they've been framed is that we are really looking for people that are strong teachers because the first piece of this is, we really want a strong instructor that can drive really strong teaching and learning and who's open to thinking about how technology can then further enhance that learning.
And then just to be clear, the funding for the two new positions is coming, is anticipated in the referendum funding that we had allocated for the technology?
That is correct.
To replace the Digital Promise?
Two new positions, yes.
Okay. Well, I think that's great. I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense that we have this, this, you know, new, the shift in our thinking about technology and we're expanding it and we're supporting that with the appropriate staff.
Are those permanent staff or are they just for the rollout?
The, so the way, I've run the dollars out a total of five years and did make sure that we moved into a place where we were across three grades and all that. And it looks, I've worked to make them sustainable and we'll evaluate them after the five years to see if that's a needed and continued investment or not. So we're in, we're in year four of Digital Promise and they're still very much adding value, but we'll continue to evaluate and see. And when you take the lens of teaching and learning, you know, there's, and the opportunity to continue to enhance the teaching and learning that's happening, there's, I think there's probably good opportunity to accelerate that work in middle schools. We've made sure, I've made sure as I'm creating the positions, that it's sustainable over time so that we can make the necessary impact.
So this will be, in addition to their role for the specific iPads, it would also include other, other forms of innovation that, that anybody might need some coaching on or additional support?
So in the, so the way we're looking at this, as I said, is really focused on teaching and learning. And so, you know, they're, you know, they're in the classrooms, working with teachers. It may be that there's kind of a multi-day series of learning and we're using the iPad this day, but then we can talk about how that's going to connect and yeah, next day it doesn't make sense if that's an, you know, to use the iPad for that particular idea. Their initial focus is on helping to think about how the iPads can increase the learning opportunities that our kids have.
Okay.
One other, I have one other question. Sorry I didn't ask it before. All this sounds great, I was thinking about on the safe and school climate side, in the suite of apps that, that you put in place, have you thought about, looked into, or tried in the current places, any bullying or suicide prevention apps that screen student content that's produced for things that social works or mental health staff should be aware of?
So the, part of our filter does watch for, our filtering does screen for self-harm and we have a process and a protocol for watching that. In regards to specific apps, we're really just beginning to build out what would be that we have an existing suite of apps and there isn't anything necessarily like that in our existing suite of apps. And we're going to continue to build out and do some refinement of those apps for the upcoming year. And so we can certainly, you know, what I think you're suggesting is looking for things that can potentially kind of be as, be there as a resource for students, is that correct?
Yeah, or, I mean, there's a lot of things out there now, some better than others, I'm sure, where a student who sees something wants to say something and they can anonymously do that via an app to
Good point.
Someone within the school to say, I'm noticing this, I need to report it and this is my mechanism to do it since I have this communication tool in my head.
That's an interesting point. And we'll do a little looking and if you have some thoughts, please do, feel free to shoot for our way.
This is in the report, but we didn't speak to it. So just for folks who are viewing, can you talk to Stacy a little bit about access at home and especially for those families that may not have access to internet connections currently, how we're, how we're managing that to make sure there's access?
So this year, we were, we've been piloting and actually, so we, last year, we started a small hotspot pilot program through one of our elementary schools with the support of Evanston Public Library. This year, we expanded that when the original Digital Promise iPads had data plans, continuing the data plans was not going to be financially sustainable for us. And so the iPads do not have data plans anymore. What we do is, the schools have individual processes for working with and identifying families who do not have internet access at home. And at that point, we then connect them with a hotspot loner program where there's an agreement that is signed and a hotspot is essentially given to the home to support the internet access at home.
And how will that timeframe, I guess, work with the students' use, you know, to stay ahead of when there might be needs for use at home?
So once the hotspot agreement is in place, that hotspot stays at the house, it doesn't need to move back and forth until we need to collect that hotspot again. So it is, it provides access for the kids at home when they need it.
So they could have it all three years? Like wouldn't have to, would they have to re-up every year?
Our habit has been we collect everything over the summer because we need to reimagine iPads and do all those things and we need to make sure everything is solid and in place with and reissue when the splitter starts.
Ah, okay.
Can I just underscore a couple of things? And this is really echoing what everybody has said. This is such a wonderful intersection of high-quality teaching and learning, innovation and equity. And it really puts, as Stacy said at the beginning of the presentation, the idea that teachers are arguing how they can differentiate in classes and reach the needs of all kids using technology as a tool for learning rather than a toy for, you know, wasting time or whatever. So just really a marvelous next step. And it's brought to us by Stacy and an extended team and really kudos to Stacy's leadership with the, the deep involvement of a wide range of educators across the district. We got to, again, tip our hats to Jim McCollin and Shoot staff and Jeff Brown and the King staff who took this dive several years ago as Stacy was landing here and as we were trying to pivot. And we've learned a lot and we're moving forward. And again, as everyone has said, we'd be remiss not tipping our hats to the citizens of Evanston and Skokie. This is part of what we are able to, what we're able to do is because of the referendum. And so the generosity of the voters who came in at 80% yes a year plus ago, this is rubber hitting the road, technology hitting the cloud, whatever, whatever the imagery is. And I think it's, it's setting a stage really to reach all kids with the, with the learning tools for the future and we couldn't be more excited.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that presentation.
Yeah, thanks.
And that was our last discussion item. We have updates and upcoming work. Does anybody have any committee reports that they'd like to share? Does anybody have any committee reports that they'd like to share? Then our next, we have a policy committee meeting next Monday, City School Liaison Committee this Thursday, and then Finance Committee and Board meeting on May 7th.
And a 202 committee meeting tomorrow morning.
Yes, that's not on here, but the Joint 65-202 Committee meeting tomorrow morning. Very early. Okay, well, if that is it, then I adjourn this meeting at 9:14 PM. Thank you.
Thanks.